Good evening and welcome to the September 28th meeting of the Dover Sherburne and Regional School Committees. My name is Nancy Cordell and I'm Chair of the Sherburne School Committee and I'm Chair of this meeting of the three school committees. And I call this meeting to order at 7:33. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join the remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne website. Yeah, Dover Sherburne District website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Okay, so next on the agenda is public comment. To make the community comments portion of this meeting the most successful and productive, we have a few ground rules to abide by. It's important to understand that this meeting we are conducting, it's important to understand that this is a meeting we're conducting in public, not a public forum. Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes. And if you'd like to make a comment, please virtually raise your hand and wait to be called on. When you speak, please begin by stating your name and where you live. Community comments are an opportunity for the school committee to listen to the members of the community. Community comments is not a forum for answering questions or engaging in debate. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, we will move on to other business. And unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is a standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts and a best practice for school committees across Massachusetts. Okay. And we will start. Community comments now. Does anyone have their hand raised? Okay. Kphone. If you want to state your name and where you live.
Sure, Kathy Horgan Die, Sherburne, Mass.
Okay.
So I sent a, I sent this to all the school committee members today. So you are all already have this information, but this is for public comment. I have to read a shorter version because it's more than three minutes. Dear School Committee Members, I'm writing to alert you to information that you may or may not have regarding the vaccines. If you go to www dot Open VAERS dot com, which is O P E N V A E R S dot com, you will see 1,545,000 adverse reactions posted, 15,386 deaths posted through September 17th. You can search by state, by adverse reaction, even death, which I just did and read many of the people who have died in Massachusetts, of all ages, from the vaccine. So a few things to think about when mandating against the teachers and staff at Dover Sherburne Public Schools. Although the Boards of Health stated that a teacher or staff member can get a medical or religious exemption, on their call last week, the Dover Board of Health said that a Cape Verdean employee at the Dunkin' Donuts in Dover could not use his medical exemption letter from a doctor stating that he had asthma and couldn't wear a mask. The Dover Board of Health overruled a person's personal doctor who has knowledge of their patient. He is now losing his job to, due to their draconian overreach. If they would do this to a BIPOC Dover employee, they will do it to teachers and staff members. So saying that a teacher can or staff can obtain a medical or religious exemption is not a guarantee of an exemption. In fact, I believe I read that any exemptions must go through the school principal, school nurse, and Board of Health. This may be for students, but employees, where does their exemption have to go? Back to the Board of Health so that they can deny it, question mark? What happened to HIPAA laws and what happened to the standing law in Massachusetts for religious exemptions? The law states that if a vaccine is against someone's deeply held religious beliefs, they are exempt from the vaccine. I would hope that Dover and Sherburne Board of Health and school committees would follow the law in all cases. With a 95% vaccination rate, numbers which we were given by the Boards of Health themselves, there is no need to push a mandate. Many colleges who pushed for vaccinating students were satisfied with a 90 to 95% vaccination rate. Why isn't Dover and Sherburne Public School System satisfied with that number as well? Ironically, many of the highly vaccinated colleges are now shutting down due to breakthrough cases, not from the unvaccinated, but from the vaccinated. Cornell and Connecticut College are two that come to mind. Finally, my last two points. If a teacher or staff member has not been vaccinated by now, it is clear that they don't want to or are not able to, whether because of a medical or religious reason. So why are we forcing them to decide between their job and their health or religion? If it's, it's a major overreach on every level. And if you vote yes on the mandate and we lose good teachers and staff due to this, it will have a negative ripple effect on all of our students and our community. And because you don't know who is vaccinated and who isn't, you don't know who you are negatively impacting. Could it be your favorite teacher or favorite counselor, front desk administrator? Lastly, if you vote to mandate this vaccine and a staff or teacher is forced to take the vaccine against their better judgment or choice, and they are injured in any way, they cannot sue Moderna, Pfizer, or J&amp;J, but they can and most likely will sue the towns of Dover and Sherburne and possibly the school committee members individually.
Excuse me, we're at, we're at three minutes and 30 seconds, okay?
Yeah. I'm just saying, I'm asking you to vote no on the unnecessary mandate of vaccines for teachers and staff at the Dover and Sherburne Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. I have Beth Thompson with her hand raised.
Yes, hi, thank you. Just a quick question with regards to the new announcement today around the 80% mandate or 80% vaccination rate and above, that Desi has said that we'll no longer require masks if schools will apply for that waiver. So I'm wondering if that would be something that we will as a school for the, I believe it's middle school and high school, apply to see, to meet that mandate, because I assume that we're over 80% at this point in time that we should be able to release the masks. So just wondering if that will be something we will be looking to do.
All right, thank you, Beth, for your comment. Do we have anyone else for community comment? Does anyone see a hand? School committee members? All right, great. Well, that concludes community comments. That concludes the community comments. And next on the agenda, but before I get into the next point, number three on the agenda, the DS Sherburne Educators Evaluation, I'm going to hand it over to Beth. I just want to take a moment and point out some changes in the members of the school committees. Angie Johnson of the Sherburne School Committee has resigned. And she applied to the Regional School Committee and was selected to serve on the Regional School Committee. Angie has been a committed and dedicated Sherburne School Committee member and committee chair, and she'll be missed. But the good news is her skills and talents and passion for our students we realized at the region. Leslie Leon has resigned from Dover, the Dover School Committee. We want to thank Leslie for her, all her leadership and efforts as a Dover School Committee member and, and as a role as chairperson. Because of these resignations, we have openings for school committee members in both the town of Sherburne and the town of Dover. If you are registered voter in either town, I would like to invite those who care about the future of DS Public Schools to consider this important opportunity to serve. And with that, I will hand it over to Beth, who will present to us on the DS Sherburne Educating Educators Evaluation, and will you?
I'm happy to do that, but did you want to do the vaccine portion first?
Oh, I'm sorry. We, yes, we did talk about that. It wasn't changed on the agenda. So I'm just starting going through. Yes, that's great. Kathy, I will hand it over to you on the vaccine mandate agenda item. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Chairperson. I appreciate it. I think we have been updated that last Wednesday evening, September 22nd, there was a joint meeting of the two Boards of Health of Dover and Sherburne. And I do want to invite tonight, as I present, I believe we have on from Sherburne Dr. Matt Vitale and Dr. Matt Beavers from Dover. I see Dr. Kay Peterson, and I'm not sure if there are any other members. Please let me know if you are here and wanting to speak. So I want to start by talking about, I do have a document and at some point I will share it. I know the Joint School Committee was given this today. This is very much a draft and it is happening very quickly and we're trying to put our information together. So I want to, first of all, state that the district's priority is to ensure that all students pre-K to 12 have access to high quality in-person instruction throughout the school year. I keep talking about that as a district priority. We're employing multiple mitigation strategies, including vaccinations and masking, that will help to keep our students and staff safe and provide meaningful opportunities for learning. The district is committed to reviewing state and local data and will continue to make adjustments in order to keep kids in school and return to pre-COVID conditions when possible. And I state that as you just had in your public comments, and I probably won't go deep into it this evening, but there was a question about the 80% vaccination rate. In fact, that was discussed yesterday when the Commissioner of Education Jeff Riley presented to superintendents and also shared this information with the all communities that they are extending the mask mandate through November 1st, but they are allowing districts to look at their own localities to take a look at, at the data, to collect information on your vaccination rates. So we are not there yet. We're working on the vaccination mandate this evening. And we will continue to address those opportunities for what we call off-ramps. I don't think any one of us wouldn't like to see every one of our children, every one of our staff members unmasked as we go through this school year. But we have had very good results and I'll talk a little bit after I go through the draft this evening of some of the mitigation strategies with surveillance testing, pool testing, test and stay programs. As a matter of fact, our pool testing at the elementary level have had well over 200 pools and we're pleased that they have been negative to this point. We did see a little uptick at the beginning of school and for us it seems to have leveled off. I had a meeting earlier tonight where another, I actually remember from a different district, talked about the struggles that they're having even with pool testing with positive results coming in. So we're very pleased. I want to thank the families. I want to thank our students and our faculty and staff who continue to employ mitigation strategies. So I do want to comment on the September 22nd meeting of the Boards of Health. They voted to mandate that all staff working in the Dover Sherburne Schools be fully vaccinated against SARS-CoV-2 with an FDA-approved or emergency use authorization vaccine. They did allow the specific protocols on exemptions and testing to be developed by the district and shall be reviewed jointly by the Dover and Sherburne Boards of Health. So tonight I would like to present our draft protocol. Beth, are we able to share that document as I go through this? So again, this is a draft to all the school committee members. We would like input from you or we will be happy to answer questions. So we start with, there are fewer than 15 staff members that remain unvaccinated across our district and they hold a variety of roles. We're looking at a timeline where all staff are expected to receive their first dose of a vaccine by Monday, November 1st, 2021. And this gives, you know, just a little over a month for, for you to start that process. We're going to be communicating to our unvaccinated staff members who will be contacted by our nurse leader who is on this evening, Jill Fidor, to clarify expectations, to answer questions. And as early as possible, the superintendent will meet with all employee bargaining leaders to review these protocols. We did talk about exemptions and they will only be for those staff members who have been granted medical exemptions under the Americans with Disability Act, the ADA, or have an exemption for sincerely held religious belief under Title VII. And will be exempt from this mandate. And when you talk about HIPAA with respect to medical privacy, I do not believe HIPAA is employed here, but all documentation is in, will, needs to be endorsed by an existing primary care or other established provider. That would be submitted to our nurse leader Jill Fidor. When we talk about testing, those individuals who have been granted an exemption must either participate in our weekly COVID-19 pool testing. It is presently being administered by the Dover Sherburne Public Schools or they can provide weekly proof of a negative COVID-19 test as a condition of continued employment. And we want testing for all unvaccinated staff to begin the week of October 4th, which is next week. So that is a quick turnaround, but we feel again with a vaccine mandate, it is important to, to get the process moving and the protocol moving. Chickering staff will, that again, have these exemptions will participate in pool testing on Mondays. When Monday is a holiday, it will be delayed until Wednesday of that week. Our Pine Hill staff will participate in pool testing on Tuesdays. Regional staff will participate in pool testing that we will set up at our central office building. And I want to remind everybody that presently we do not have regular pool testing going on at the regional level. We do have it on Mondays at Chickering for our students and on Tuesday at Pine Hill. So they will participate on Tuesday mornings between 7:30 and 8:30 before school begins. And it will be administered by contracted CIC personnel, who are the vendors working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and are employed in our district. Bus drivers are employees of Michael J. Conley and Sons and they're subject to requirements as outlined by the federal government. For businesses of more than 100 employees, we will be working with Michael J. Conley and Sons to make sure our bus drivers again are following the vaccination guidelines. Staff hired after October 1st, which is this Thursday, will be required to be fully vaccinated within 60 days of onboarding as a continued condition of employment. And guests of the district, if there are any questions, are not subject to this mandate, but must follow all mitigation strategies outlined in our policies and procedures, which includes the face coverings, any other distancing that we provide. This is for volunteers, contractors coming into the schools, you know, guest mystery readers. I mean, there, there are a number of opportunities where again, we would be following our own policies, not a vaccine mandate. So let me open it up for questions from the Joint School Committees.
Go ahead, Judy.
Yeah, so my, my, my experience in in industry is that it is pretty difficult to get a medical exemption or a religious exemption. So my question is, if an employee is not granted either, applies for it, but is not granted a medical or religious exemption and they refuse to get vaccinated, what happens?
You know, what we would do is we certainly would work with the employee and we would work with our legal counsel and see what options we have.
Okay, but that doesn't answer the question, Kathy. I'm, I don't, and I don't mean to press you, but I'm, I, it's important to know the answer to that.
So Judy, you know, honestly, when you say, will they be terminated? We would move to termination. But we would, you know, work with our, again, with our employees. We're looking to do everything we can to find out how we can assist them. And at the same time, if we have a vaccine mandate which has been mandated, then we have to honor that. So again, we would work with our, our legal counsel and see what options we have.
So, but. Okay. So are you telling me that if they're not if they're, if the exemptions are not granted and you can't convince them to be vaccinated, that they'll be terminated?
At this point, that would be our only recourse. If that is a mandate, we feel it's important enough in a public health crisis. As I said, we'll work with them. There might be, and that's why I'm bringing this up this evening. You know, are there other suggestions? We right now have before us a mandate from the Boards of Health. So we're moving as quickly as we can to, you know, support our employees that are going to provide us with reasons for. And as was brought up in a number of conversations, if people haven't received the vaccine at this point, we know that it's readily available. So either people are hesitant, maybe they need some education as far as how we can support them. They can work with our, our nurse leader and our nurses in the buildings, who I'm sure they have, you know, very good relationships with over the years, many of them. We'll do everything we can to support them, but in the end, if it is a mandate, we have to take a look at what are the consequences because of that.
Excellent, thank you. Tracy, you had your hand up. Thanks, Judy.
Hi, yes, thank you. I guess my concerns were similar to Judy's. One of the different things, though, in my background, the women that I've worked with in the past in Boston hospitals, the one population I'm concerned about right now is those women are teachers who may be family planning and not ready to tell anybody yet, who may not want to get these vaccinations. And I think we need to really think about that. You can give someone as much education as you want as a clinician and they may be scared to get this vaccination at this time. And I guess I'm concerned that they'll have to come forth to their employer to say, I, I'm trying to get pregnant. I, we're family planning. I am pregnant and I just haven't told you yet. That can be a very uncomfortable position. So I don't know if we're going to have to work something in there as far as women and family planning. I would appreciate that.
And Tracy, I would hope that they would work with their medical professionals. You know, for those reasons.
I totally agree. Yes, yes, I agree. But on the other hand too, there's, having worked with maternity patients most of my life, they, they really don't want to take a lot of vaccines. And I guess because so many of our teachers are female, that is one of my greatest concerns is that a woman who is trying to become pregnant or is pregnant early on and has not told you yet, may now end up losing her job. And that I would be concerned about. That's my only concern right now. Thank you.
And I don't believe we're asking them to share that information with us, but I would hope that they would go to their medical professional and, and share their medical concerns, share their, their exemption opportunity.
Yeah, but as Judy said, I'm worried that the exemptions won't go through. That's my biggest concern.
Can I, can I just jump in on a medical exemption? So just for anybody that has a question about a medical exemption, if it is coming from a primary care physician or another specialist who is overseeing the staff members' care. If that, if that physician writes a medical exemption, it's not, that's it, that, I mean, it's not up to me to decide whether that's correct or not. That would be an appropriate medical exemption. Medical exemptions can be reevaluated at any time because a person's health status can change at any time. And so that's just something also to keep in, in the back of our minds with. If we're talking about, you know, newly pregnant women or, or otherwise, you know, that there are many reasons why there could be a medical exemption. So I just wanted to make that clarifying point.
Thank you, Jill. I would hope there'd be more open-mindedness because last week there was a man who was rejected, an employee of another establishment in Dover, not with schools, and his medical exemption was rejected and he lost his job. So that's really what I'm concerned about is protecting these 16 or so teachers that for some reason can't or can't get the vaccine right now.
And Tracy, it is not, when I say less than 15, you know, I obviously have information, but you know, it runs the gamut of everybody that makes up our staff. So it isn't just, it isn't just teachers. We have, you know, many other people that work in the district. So I just want people to be clear about that.
Yes, yes.
It's our employees. It is not, you know, we said it was less than 15. It is not 15 teachers.
Okay, sorry, sorry. No, I didn't know exactly know the number. I'm just, I'm concerned about them.
Yes. Yep, thanks, Tracy.
Maggie?
Thanks, Tracy. So just to clarify, what I heard from Jill is that the school district is the organization evaluating medical exemptions, not the Boards of Health. It strikes me that we're, that the, the other issue that was brought up was a private employer and that the private employer brought, somehow must have brought this issue to the Board of Health or something. I don't know. But what I'm, I just want to clarify, the school district is responsible for evaluating medical exemptions, right?
Yes, according to what you have in front of you with our draft, it would be submitted to our nurse leader. And again, the documentation should be endorsed by an existing primary care or other established provider that our employee has.
And, and I guess I ask that because I have a great deal of trust in our medical providers and also because I do have some concerns that somehow, and I, this is the first I'm hearing really of the situation, but I just want to make sure that our employees' personal information and whether or not they've sought exemptions and so forth is protected. And I believe us that we would keep it. So I just don't want to unnecessarily draw parallels between some other situation and our situation. So that's all. I think you clarified it for me. And I just wanted to say thank you for the careful work that has gone through writing up this memorandum, because I can tell that there is a lot of thought that's gone into the many layers of it. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Maggie. Lynn?
Two things. One, I, can we add under the exemptions, there, the exemptions only, only those staff members who've been granted exemptions under the ADA and Title VII? Just a technical, there's the state discrimination statute as well. And while they overlap a lot, they're, they're different. So if we could add 151B, and I can give the specific language or the specific reference if you, if you need it, but.
Lynn, could you send that to me, please?
Yeah, yeah, sure thing. And then the other thing is with respect to accommodation requests, you know, any employee who needs an accommodation from their employer for anything is going to have to disclose certain medical information about themselves. So even, you know, you know, employees who have, you know, have conditions that they don't necessarily or prefer not to share with their employer, if they're requesting accommodation as a practical matter, they have to share what they need to share in order to get that accommodation. So that's, it's going to happen regardless. And it's, and it's a standard practice. And to Maggie's point, there are protocols in place to ensure that employee medical information is kept private and confidential.
Yes, agreed. Very important.
Thanks, Lynn. I have, I have a question. Fully vaccinated, I know that's, does that mean both shots and the waiting period or just both shots? Or the single, there's a single shot too, but you know, just wondering what that.
That's a good question. So I have the doctors on board. We have the date of November 1st that we're saying the first dose. So we, you know, for those people, we didn't give an end date figuring if you're taking Pfizer, it's so many weeks. If it's Moderna, it's different. If it's J&amp;J, it's different. I think that's the answer to what you're looking for, Nancy. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm answering that correctly.
No, you are. I just didn't know if it was after the second dose, there was a waiting period, you know, when you're fully, you know, there's your 40% vaccinated after the first dose. And then, you know, after so many weeks, then it, so I'm just wondering if there was a waiting period after the, the, the second dose is in your arm.
So I can, I can take it.
Fully vaccinated.
Right. So it seems that the, the language around requirement is just for when the shot, the first shot goes in, which makes sense. I guess one place where it's now occurring to me, this may come up is are we going to continue to require testing until someone is, is through the waiting period? Which, which I think is sort of the one place where that could arise. And I guess we hadn't really discussed or thought about that. I mean, I wasn't involved in drafting this language either. We, I've seen it, but, but that's as much. I think that's a reasonable question to say if someone is not yet vaccinated or not yet, you know, a couple of weeks past their second dose, do we want them to be engaged in pooled testing until they are at that point? I think that's a reasonable thing to request and it's, it's something we could discuss.
Thank you, Dr. Beavers. Now I understand it better, Nancy.
Oh, sorry. I know I wasn't, I wasn't asking very specifically. And then if someone has the exception granted, will they be, have to undergo pool testing or testing? You know, to be, you know, as, as part of the terms of employment, because they're not.
They would be, they would be the only people doing this. So if you're granted an exemption, medical or religious, you are the group that is doing the testing, the pool testing. Or submitting your own negative test weekly. So that is the group. So I'm hearing you say that we would add this, take a look at this additional language that they would test until they're fully vaccinated.
And Kathy, just one clarification. Come October 4th, we're testing everybody. we're testing everybody. It's November first on, is that pocket of the exemptions?
Correct. Thank you.
I think Maggie has another question. That's my own hand. Curse her. No, it's my own cursor.
I just turned my camera off so I can eat a salad without you guys watching me chew. I'll be right back. I'm listening.
Any other discussion? Oh, Sarah.
I'm sorry if I'm revisiting some prior territory here, but I want to make sure I understand. So if, if I'm summarizing Jill's statement earlier, that, that those who would apply for a medical exemption supply a letter from their doctor, whether it's their PCP or a specialist with whom they're treating. Those requests go to Jill, and, and then Jill, is it, are they granted automatically as a matter of right, because they have supported the request with substantiation from the physician, or is there some, is there some decision there still to be made? And then my second question is, and I, I can't confess to understand this process, but how, how does one apply for a religious exemption and who makes that determination?
So I'll try to answer your question, Sarah. I can, I can only answer your question on how we do this for the students, because this is what I know best, and it's the, we have not done this in the past with staff members. So for students in Massachusetts, attending public school, a medical exemption is reviewed by the school nurse, and if it is an authentic medical exemption written by a primary care physician or somebody overseeing the child's care, then we accept that medical exemption as fact and as the appropriate documentation. Religious exemption is the same thing, except it doesn't need to be written by anybody else, anybody besides the parent. And when a parent writes a religious exemption, we take that exemption and and we take it as, as as the appropriate exemption for the child. Both of those need to be revisited every year, or if there's a change in somebody's medical status, we would, we would look at it earlier than a year if we needed to. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's how school nurses across the state do this for students.
I think, Sarah, do you have a follow-up? I think Judy has a, a question having to do with the same topic, and then we'll go to Dennis, if that's okay? But Sarah, continue with you. Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna, I want to add something because you know, I am an employment lawyer, and in what I do, this is the hottest topic on my desk, and I've dealt with about a billion of the, not a billion, but I've dealt with many of the religious exemption issues in the last week. That's basically all I've been doing. And the process that most employers employ is very different from the one that Jill described with regard to religious exemptions, okay? It's not one that, with regard to an employer, is generally rubber stamped. And excuse me, Jill, I don't mean to be, I'm not at all denigrating you or, or the process that you described. That is not my intent at all. I, I'm simply describing what employers are doing these days with regard to the religious exemption, okay? I don't represent the school district in my suggestion, because the religious exemption, exemption is really complicated. My suggestion is that that is an area that we ought to look at and work on. I know this is a draft, Kathy, and I think that my suggestion is that we get some advice from some other people about how that might be better handled.
So Judy, I don't disagree. We, we had that discussion today. Jill is sharing with you what she has done when students, when we talk about vaccinations that have been around for a long time. So this is what the district has employed as far as taking parents at their word with a sincerely held religious belief. Obviously, we were dealing with, you know, di- different reasons, different times. So we have had this exact discussion that we need to work, you know, against sincerely held religious belief, what does that mean? So we would have to work with our council, or as you said, outreach to, to try to better define that. And I know this is coming at us very quickly. I mean, you see us with starting the, what we do know on Monday is those people that are not vaccinated are going to, as a condition of employment, do the testing right now. We will then work to find out those people that are ready to submit exemptions, if in fact they exist, we'll give them a little bit of time medically or with a, a religious exemption and, and try to work through this, because I agree, if, if this is not going to be easy, and that's why I keep saying we will work with our employees, we will work with our, our own legal team to make sure we're being very fair. And what we want is, again, it's a mandate, and we want our students and staff to be safe in our schools and to continue with that being a district priority this year.
Great. Thanks Judy. Thanks Kathy. Dennis, would you?
Thanks. So this assumes that we are requiring people to provide proof? Or could I, have we collected proof yet from folks, or is the the, the numbers that we have just based on sort of self-reporting?
So we've had a lot of self-reporting from staff, and we've also been able to pull the data from the state registry, the immunization registry for those who have been vaccinated, who are in the registry. So the nurses have done that work, and the nurses asked all staff members to present that information to each building, where, you know, wherever they were, to their building nurse, I should say. And so the nurses have, have that confidential information.
Okay. Thank you.
So Dennis, I have to say, and I've been in touch with a lot of superintendents. So we were, and I'm talking about our nurse team, they have done an exceptional job of, as Jill said, you know, looking at the state database for information, but for a number of us, we had to provide the documentation. So that was list by list, checking lists over, making sure we were capturing everybody that makes up the Dover Sherburne Public Schools, central office administrators, you know, people throughout the district. So all of our employee units. So I, I want to, you know, thank them for the work that they've done. It hasn't been easy.
Yeah, no doubt. I was just, that, that wasn't sort of clearly articulated here, so I just wanted to make sure I understood.
We, we wish that databases talked to each other, but that isn't necessarily the case. It should be a lot easier than it's been.
Project for future date.
Great. Thank you, Dennis. Amanda?
I just had two questions that are kind of bigger picture. The first is, I, I'm not sure if I missed it or not, but has, I know this came from the boards of health, but has the educators association had a chance to review it yet and meet with you, or is that upcoming?
Well, I'll answer it a couple of ways, and I know, I, I thought I saw Judy Guin on here. I'm not sure if Laney Glenn is on also, but what I will tell you is we certainly made them aware, when we were aware that the board of health, the boards of health were having their meeting last Wednesday, the twenty second, they received the same information that we had. The assistant superintendent, myself, we have a regular meeting every two weeks. I met with them just yesterday. We hadn't at that point formed the draft. They knew we were going to be sharing this tonight, and this feedback has been excellent because we, again, want to, you know, can, you know, get on this very quickly, as it is a mandate. So as I said, I will be meeting with all of the employer groups as soon as possible, hopefully before the end of this week. But I wanted to finalize this draft and incorporate your suggestions or answer some of the questions that, this has been very helpful tonight.
All right, terrific. Thank you. And then the other question is, and this is maybe for the boards of health, but typically when a vaccine is mandated for teachers or students, does that happen at the state level? I'm just wondering if there's going to be guidance from DSC at some point, or if it's all happening on the local level?
I wish it would come from the state, because we did masks last time with an extensive discussion, lots of back and forth. That to the state said, no, 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 we're not gonna act. And then they acted, because I think the data was pretty clear. I think part of the timing for us was we'd hope that the state would act on a consistent statewide basis, as opposed to just going jurisdictionally. They didn't. I don't know, we know what they'll do with students. You know, again, I hope that the state will take action, because I think you, we certainly see substantial disparities between communities that have low vaccination rates and uptake, and those that have more robust uptake. And so letting that sort of play out on a community by community basis, is that what I would favor? I think they made clear on the teacher front that they were not going to provide guidance thus far. But again, if they changed their mind, I would be downright enthusiastic.
Thank you.
Is, we have any more discussion? No? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Great discussion. Now we're gonna move to Beth with the evaluation MOU.
Okay, thank you. So I will share my screen. And I know that the school committee received my slides ahead of time, so I'm not gonna go through all of them. I know you're very disappointed, but I'll give you a general overview of the process and then talk about the changes that we're focused on moving forward. So we had many committee members that have been working since July of 2020. I would just like to recognize a few that are on this phone call. Our educators, Judy Guin, Renee Grady, and Kate McCarthy, as well as our school committee members, Amanda Brown, Maggie Sharon, and Mark Healy. We are given a task out of the last contract to come together and reevaluate the evaluation process, and they get more efficient and meaningful for educators. So of course, we've looked into the Massachusetts requirements. And just for those of you who might be new to this process, there's a self-assessment that educators do in September. Then they set goals for themselves, and then we implement the plan. So as the educators are working on their goals and monitoring students' learning, the evaluators are going into classrooms halfway through the year. The educators meet with their evaluators, talk about their progress on the goals, talk about what they're seeing in the classroom. The evaluators give feedback based on their observations. And then at the end of the year, there's a summit of evaluation where our teachers are rated as exemplary proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. So again, you're welcome to view all of these slides, and I'm happy to answer any questions or meet with you. Otherwise, to talk about the lengthy process. But we have been living with the Dover Sherburne evaluation model since 2013, which is right after the state rolled out kind of their new expectations. So we, as a committee, came together and talked about our pros, and then areas where we wanted to make sure we improved the process, a lot around consistency, clarity, and making the process meaningful. So that being said, we took our committee and we grew, grouped into three groups. One was talking about how do we make this meaningful? So we're not just going, you know, evaluators are not just going into classrooms, taking notes, writing it up, and then checking the box. How do we have conversations so that educators can reflect on their practice and continue to grow throughout their career? The second group really looked at the process, the forms, the timelines, trying to make everything clear and as delineated as possible. And the third group worked on the collaborative inquiry model. So over time, we've kind of morphed from a very strict model where teachers were paid to work with other teachers and mentor them and give them feedback about a question of interest, to we wanted to give now our educators the most flexibility in terms of identifying an area of interest or a problem of practice that they wanted to dive into research and learn more about. And we're allowing them great flexibility in that they can work alone on that with a partner or with a small group, whether that's their grade level or department. So where are our areas of agreement moving forward? To date, we have been using the Dover Sherburne rubric to evaluate teachers. It was very thorough. It was done a number of years ago. But the Massachusetts rubric, we feel like is much more robust and streamlined. And the Massachusetts rubrics also allow for nurses, librarians, school psychologists to have their own rubric, which I think supports them in the specific and specialized roles that they play in the building. In terms of setting goals, you heard that we do that at the beginning of the year. Initially, we had set three. And that was when the state first rolled out the expectation, there was a hope for three goals. They're now expecting two. And I think that if we can spend more time focusing on two really good goals, we'll definitely make it farther in terms of supporting student, students and student achievement. The next ones, again, were part of the 2013 state rollout. They were never implemented, so we're taking them out of our written handbook, because they don't apply. The majority of observations, we want to be done in an instructional setting. So although educators spend the majority of their time in the classroom, they obviously are part of IEP meetings, they're part of grade level meetings, they meet with parents. And all of those components are important, but we want to say that the majority of observations are done in the classroom, and a minority of the observations can be done in those other settings. When an observer or an evaluator does a mini observation, we expect that person will have a conversation in a written report within two school days. For any observation longer than thirty minutes, the conversation and report will come within five days. The question was, well, what is a full observation? So for our new educators, within their first three years, it's required that we do a full classroom observation, which includes any sort of lesson that has a beginning, a middle, and an end. One of the expectations of the state is that educators provide evidence that they're working towards their goals and that they're meeting the standards in the rubric. That is not something that we have been doing with fidelity in the district. So we will do that moving forward. However, we've done so in a manner that we think is the least intrusive and the most meaningful to our educators. We do not expect them to show up with wheelbarrows full of examples of student work. We're asking for one or two for each of the areas. Student feedback, research says, is very important to educate a reflection. We've used a number of different tools and ways to collect student feedback in the past, and we want to make sure that we incorporate that crystal clear moving forward in our process, and we will come back together to talk about how we collect that and what tools we use. Lastly, the current contract says that we do not have to let a teacher, a non-professional status teacher, so someone within their first three years, or any educator, a counselor, a nurse, we would not have to tell them until June fifteenth that we were not going to renew them for the following year, which we feel is very late and does not extend professional courtesy. So we are moving that deadline back to May fifteenth, so that if we do not intend to renew a first or second year teacher, we give them time to make other plans. So the Massachusetts rubric looks like this. Again, we talked about rating each of these areas, because I'm very proficient, needs improvement, unsatisfactory. We made a very clear chart. So depending on which plan you're on, this is very clear in terms of what are the different steps that have to happen during the school year? Who is responsible for writing such a report? Is it the educator, is it the evaluator? What is the due date, and how is this a change from past practice? We also clarified who's doing which forms, and this was worked on this summer by a subgroup. They went through all of the forms that we used and tried to clarify. So the educators know that they are reflecting on their work and providing evidence, and our evaluators know that they are then looking at what the educator provides and writing the overall report. So at the end of the day, the question is, after Beth did all of that talking, how does this impact boots on the ground? So as an educator, the real differences you'll see is that you no longer have three goals to keep up with. You have two really meaningful goals. You know which forms you have to complete, and yes, you do have to provide some evidence towards your goals and practice. As an evaluator, where will you feel the impact? There is fewer observations that are required for teachers in their first three years. And the expectation then is, if you're not running around trying to get the observations done, instead, you're having, you're taking that time to have meaningful conversations with the educators around their fewer observations. So you can develop, develop those relationships and encourage teachers to reflect and really move them forward in their practice. And similarly, evaluators will know which forms to use, and will be using the DSC rubric, the state rubric, to evaluate. So next steps, we have been working with the union, they've seen this, they will be voting on it in the next few weeks. That said, we also want to make sure that we're providing examples of evidence. That said, we also want to make sure that we're providing examples of evidence, exemplar forms, and then talking as educators on how best to collect student feedback. So that is it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer questions or do a side workshop at some point about the process and the details.
Okay, looks like Maggie has a question.
Um, I just wanted to share that this is a process that has been going on for like well since the before the pandemic. And just that my experience, I know alongside Amanda and Mark, I don't, I don't know if they want to weigh in, but this was a really extraordinarily collaborative project. You know, working on this team, you know, I know we Beth shared the list at the beginning, but it included educators at all different levels of experience across grade levels with different kinds of roles in the district. Looking at this as someone who works in a different, a different town, but also in an educator capacity. Some of the big things that I think are important for us to know are is that I think it's really important that we're moving our faculty onto the DSE rubric. It's really extraordinarily well thought out. The rubric exemplars are clear. It's a really powerful tool and something that I'm grateful that we are able to adopt. And I just think that in the conversations that happened in the meetings over the years, there was a lot of real honest conversation about making sure that this process was useful, effective, provided an opportunity for evaluators have real conversations about what's going on in classrooms and focused on that classroom experience. But also that could help teachers set meaningful goals that would lead to improvement and student achievement. And, and, and I think it's, it was really impressive to me, the the, the good work that went on and that each of the professionals that came to that table, how important it was to them to make sure that this tool is really powerful. And I support the changes. I'm really grateful for the work of everybody and for your leadership of the group. And I hope that it's approved by the, by us and also by the Educators Association.
Thank you, Maggie, and thank you for bringing up those important points.
Any other comments, questions, Kate? Oh, sorry, Mark, I saw you. I came first and then Mark.
Thanks Nancy. Beth, thanks for this. This is really thorough and exciting. And I agree with everything Maggie just said, so I won't repeat that. I just want to add, I'm really glad that it looks like you're going to try to work in student feedback effectively. And, and as a past elementary school teacher, I recognize that that can be tricky, but and with a grain of salt perhaps, but I do think it's really valuable. And I know my experience as a past educator and my experience with my own children, that they don't always feel like their voice is valued and heard at the end of the year. And I do think that they have really great ideas and if they can articulate them well, I would hope that our educators would really hear those. So I'm really glad to see that.
Thank you. And I think that's one of the components I'm most passionate about. As we've talked to students over the last few years, whether it was around the portrait of a graduate or equity, they all said, we really wish we could give feedback to teachers. And, you know, many of them said it would be great if it was anonymous so that we don't feel like there is fear of retaliation or, or what would happen if I said. So I think that we have to find a way to encourage students to give meaningful constructive feedback in a respectful way and encourage teachers to reflect on that and, and find kind of patterns for ways that they could improve the experience for kids. As was mentioned in an earlier meeting, we're rolling out the panorama dashboard for all of our data around supporting students that comes with not only a social emotional learning survey that's top notch. It also comes with some student feedback surveys for teachers that we want to look at. And then to your point about the little guys, you know, I do think it's going to look probably like the airport where you kindergarten, first grade, they click on the smiley face, kind of the plain face or the sad face for some of the questions, but we will figure out something developmentally appropriate that is meaningful for both the kids and the teachers.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate you taking that seriously.
Thanks, Kate. Thanks, Beth. Mark?
Yes, one of my points was absolutely to support that addition of student feedback. Just I think it's a great component. And secondly, I know it says there's fewer mini observations, which is a helpful piece because you can focus on those and you don't get anxious about that. But I want to mention, you know, there are also the opportunities for classroom visits regularly, which don't need to be cataloged and categorized, but give you that full sense of what is happening in a teacher's classroom. And actually, we'll put those mini observations in a context over kind of what, well, what did I see last week when I joined in that lab group in your class? They're nice compliments to that overall evaluation system.
Thank you. And if you haven't noticed yet, the preschool committees who supported this work are all educators. So they live in and breathe it in both of theirs worlds, which I think the other educators on the committee appreciated.
That's great. Lynn?
Can you speak a little bit more about the goals? As you were talking about the goals, I was wondering, you know, one, what how, when we eliminated, when we went from three to two, was there a category that, that was removed or? And then secondly, how, I'm curious what that looks like, you know? Can you sort of give an example of like a goal that, you know, a student learning goal that a, that an educator would have for the year?
Sure. So we initially had one professional practice goal, which really has to do with the way that you approach teaching and assessment as a teacher and two student learning goals. And so we are reducing it to one professional practice and one student learning goal. And I can give you an example of, of both. So for the last few years, what we've done is we've taken the district improvement plans, which you know, kind of flow into the school improvement plans and then created goals, possible goals for the teachers to adopt if they want to. Because the work that they're going to do through faculty meetings, department meetings, grade level meetings is going to support these goals. So it's kind of a win-win. You're going to do the work. So you might as well get credit for in your evaluation. So rolling out this year, the professional practice goal that is offered for those who are interested is around the silver linings. And as we said, you know, a lot of what we learned in the pandemic that is supported by the portrait of a graduate challenge, success, cultural responsiveness, the two big themes that spread across all of those are student engagement and building relationships. So the professional practice goal that we're suggesting is around expanding teachers repertoire of strategies that engage students in the learning and put them at the center and have them doing most of the work during the class and building relationships of trust with the teacher and between students in the classroom. The student learning goal. This is, we could have a whole conversation about SMART goals and how, you know, I'm going to get my kids to go from 80% proficient on this test, this question on the MCAS to 85. Well, that's totally subjective and really is that growth. So we're focusing more on kind of a bigger picture. So the one we're proposing around student learning is based in the equity audit in that we want to be, make sure that we are exposing students to historically accurate information that they can see themselves in books. They can hear multiple perspectives, all to sharpen their critical thinking skills. And all of those 21st century skills, we, we want the students to be able to graduate with, then to go and make a difference in the world. Does that make sense?
That's great. Anyone else? Any more discussion? All right, Beth, thank you so much, all the work for you and your team. And I agree with everyone else's comments. So next up is Kathleen with the educators MOA.
Thank you, Nancy. So I will go back a year when all districts were putting together their return to school plans, they were bargaining with their educators, unions, associations, and it was no different here in Dover Sherburne. You had quite a large document. I am told it was a very collaborative process. You are one of the districts and I continue to compliment you that if you go back just a year ago, you actually had your youngest students already in school four days a week at the beginning of October. That to be followed by your older elementary students and then to your middle and high school. So all of this, again, was part of coming together, making sure that we had agreements, making sure people were safe and our kids had opportunities to learn. When we started this year, I can't tell you, I was, I definitely, I can tell you, I was hopeful that we would not have to go back to a memorandum of agreement with any of our unions that we would be able to, as we said, go back to pre-COVID situations, but that was not the case. Actually, this was a good exercise. We came and met with starting in mid-August with members of the Dover Sherburne Teachers Association and also, I'm sorry, Education Association and our school committee members and our administration's team. What we did was we whittled down the document because there were so many things that were not applicable. For instance, remote learning. So you have the document in front of you. I can go through it in detail. Or I can call out some of the areas that we worked on that are different than previous MOA. Is that okay to proceed in that way? You do have the document before you? Yes. So, okay. So under Article One, some new language. Any employee who cannot report to work due to COVID-related reasons as specified by the CDC or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education shall be permitted to work remotely at the discretion of the superintendent and if medically able to do so. So we wanted to look at this on a case by case basis as to why they couldn't report to work. There are many reasons why we would want to allow a teacher to work remotely. It might be a particular area that can't be covered by somebody else. We don't want our students to lose ground. And at the same time, we want our teachers to be healthy enough to be able to do that. So that is at the discretion of the superintendent who will work with the principal and the school leader to see if this is feasible. As you can imagine, there are some areas where it would not be feasible. For instance, we had a preschool teacher who was actually on the negotiating team here for the Educators Association and we couldn't imagine a situation where that educator could work remotely. So it does depend on the age of the students and our reasons for doing that. Also, under Article One, upon the approval of the superintendent, any employee who cannot report to work due to COVID-related reasons as specified by the CDC or Department of Elementary and Secondary Education may deduct the time from the sick bank up to a maximum of 10 days. And such requests must be put in writing with related documentation attached. So again, the sick bank is overseen again by the district and the Educators Association. Those days are educators' days that they bank in case they have a member that needs to go to the bank to use such days. So again, many times, obviously, these are unanticipated. It could be for a variety of reasons. Transmission could happen in the school setting. So we want to be careful to be able to support our educators. In Article Three, under General, so long as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education permits parents to opt for remote IEP and 504 meetings. And we found this to be beneficial to many parents during COVID. This is one of those silver linings where we made sure that we continue to have our IEP meetings, our 504 meetings. So we want to make sure to protect our staff, that building administrators, the district, will provide educators with multiple options of locations to participate in such virtual meetings. So we didn't want to place that on the educators to have to run around and find a place. So we're identifying, depending on the size of the meeting, it might be a smaller meeting where we can find an appropriate location. Or we would also have other locations that might be larger in size, depending on the group that will be taking taking part in the virtual meeting. So other than that, most of the language that we kept really remained the same from language we had in the previous MOA. So tonight I am requesting that you take action and, and vote to accept this memorandum of agreement with our Dover Sherburne Education Association.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion first and then we'll have discussion. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the MOA between the school committees and DSEA as presented?
Don't we have to do this by committee? Do we have to do three motions, one by each committee?
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you, Judy. Sherburne, do I have a motion to approve the MOA between the school committees and the DSEA as presented?
Amanda Brown, so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'm just going second.
Over to you, Kate.
At the region, do I have a motion to approve? To adopt?
Approve the MOA between the school committees and DSEA as presented.
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Thank you. All right.
Lynn Collins, second.
Okay.
Okay, so is it over to Dover then?
Yep. Sarah? For Dover, do I have a motion as stated by Nancy?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Colleen Burt, second.
Okay, and now we'll, we can discuss, not by committee, we can discuss in total. And Judy, you, you had your hand up first.
Sorry, I had a question. I got to pull the language up. Here we go. So, and I assume that this has already been discussed by the collective bargaining committee. Yes, Lynn? Yes? Okay, so my question is, I don't understand this first Article One where it says, any employee cannot report to work due to COVID-related reasons shall be permitted to work remotely. So I don't, since, since we're not doing remote school this year, I don't understand what circumstances that might come up in. And I'm not opposed to it. I just don't understand it. If somebody could explain how it might come up and how, for example, a teacher might be able to work remotely if they could. It's just a point of information.
Okay, so let me take the first shot at it. So you may have a teacher that is a close contact and has to quarantine. One of the situations we brought up was an AP chemistry teacher. And it would be hard to fill that position with a substitute. And we did not, we would not want the students to get behind in their work. So if the teacher was medically able to do so, and in working with Principal John Smith, you know, we had a discussion and we came to an agreement that we would employ, as you said, what we did last year was allowing the teacher to remotely, the students would be in school and the teacher would remote in. And it would also take having to supervise the classroom. All of those things would come into play, but we would allow the teacher to take part in that.
Okay, that's really smart and I couldn't, and I, that's great. So the teacher's remote, but the kids are in the classroom. That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Clarifying question on that point. Thank you, Nancy. So Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that a fully vaccinated close contact need not quarantine as long as they remain asymptomatic. So is the idea here that you're providing an opportunity for a vaccinated teacher who is a close contact and is mildly symptomatic to be teaching from home if they are up to doing so? I'm just not sure I'm understanding what, again, what the circumstances are that would call for this.
Right. And Sarah, that's a good question because when we were looking at it and both the union and administration agreed, it was a small group of members that would be affected. We did not have all the information that we have right now, nor am I at liberty to talk about, you know, the 15 members that are unvaccinated and where they fall. But we, we were protecting those particular staff members that we might want to do that. Or it could be a breakthrough case. You're right. And they could have mild symptoms and were able to, to work remotely. It was, it was going to be used and we talked about that very, we saw that as something that was going to be very rare, but wanted to make sure we had discussed it and agreed that at the superintendent's but wanted to make sure we had discussed it and agreed that at the superintendent's discretion, we could weigh all options and make a decision in the best interest of our children. That's what the decision was made.
Right, and the piece of, you know, the sort of sanity check for, does this make sense for the particular class impacted, seems to me to be an important part, because an AP chemistry teacher teaching remotely is very different than a pre-K teacher or a first-grade teacher. So yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, Maggie, and then Dennis.
I, I think I just wanted to weigh in on that scenario, Sarah, because I think that there definitely have been, you know, not, you know, people getting very mild illness who are vaccinated and test positive, or are close contacts and then have to go through a test. They wouldn't have had to quarantine. But, you know, they're worried about this class progressing, or whatever you have. And, you know, substitute teachers, whether they're available at all in Dover Sherborne, are very, very hard to find. And certainly ones who have the experience teaching some of the upper-level courses. So I just appreciate the flexibility. You know, and I think about special educators, for example, who might have an IEP meeting scheduled that's got 43 people coming to the table, and if that person is not able to participate in that day, it can become really, really cumbersome in terms of rescheduling those kind of meetings. So I just appreciate the flexibility that this allows the district in terms of meeting kids' best needs.
That was a useless comment.
I try not to be useless, but thank you.
Okay, Dennis?
Thanks, so, thank you. This is a lot of good work here. Just one question, maybe clarifying, because I don't understand the particulars of it. But the second highlighted point under Article One, is this saying that teachers won't take their own sick time if they were to get sick, or is it? But I'm, I guess I'm just not clear on what do we mean by the sick bank? I understand that there may be sort of additional sick time that's not kind of directly attributed to them. But is that if somebody were to get COVID or were to be a close contact and has to quarantine, that it's not coming from their own sick time, it's coming from the bank? Is that what that's saying? Do I understand that correctly?
So let me, let me take a stab at this also. Some, again, a sick bank can be used in a variety of ways. So we might have some very new employees, teachers in our district that really have not accumulated a lot of sick days at this point. And if they were to be unlucky and have a reason that they have to be out of school, we wanted to have this option, and again, there is a process in place, and please correct me if I'm wrong, a process in place where people have to apply to the sick bank. There is an oversight as far as approving those days in their days that are the Employee Education Association Union's days anyway. So they would be depleting their own days. So that was part of the negotiated bargain, that yes, it doesn't necessarily mean they have to deplete their days. And please, somebody correct me if I'm not reading that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any more discussion, comments? Okay, we'll have Dover vote first.
All right, let's have our members unmute themselves.
Do, do you need the language again, or? Should I just read it once?
Please, Nancy, thank you.
Okay. We're voting to approve the MOA between the school committees and DSEA as presented.
All right, Dover, I'm just going to call you in the order that I see you on my screen. Mark?
Mark Keely, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Okay, Kate?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the MOA between the school committee and the SCA as presented.
You can take. Yep, you're just asking for the vote.
Oh, I'm just, I'm sorry, I thought I had to repeat your, okay.
You're voting to approve the MOA between the school committees and DSEA, just DSEA as presented.
Thank you. Okay, so now just the roll call. Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. I got everyone, didn't I? Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sherborne is voting to approve the MOA between the school committees and DSEA as presented. Dennis?
Dennis Quandt, yes.
I'm forgetting, Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, I'm going to hand it over to Dawn.
Oh, okay. In your packet was a memo from the executive director of Accept Collaborative. And as you know, all three districts participate in Accept Collaborative. Primarily, they, they serve special education needs for us. And they are, as a board, and Kathy's actually a board member with them now, are asking us, they want to establish a capital reserve. So as you know, some of towns have capital reserve funds. It's a way to prepare for larger capital purchases or acquirement of property going forward. They have surplus of funds, and so they'd like to be strategic about using those funds. And so are asking the districts to approve the creation or the establishment of a capital reserve up to $1 million. Just so you know, once they establish that, any use of those funds will have to go through their normal budgeting process. And so it would come, it would come before the Board of Directors of the Accept for approval. At our business administrator meeting, they sort of highlighted that, you know, this is an opportunity to take advantage of the surplus funds. They did get a PPE loan that was forgiven that caused, that gave them some of their reserves. But they're looking at, they're growing right now, and I don't know if you know, they have a newer building over in Natick, but they are already feeling like they're pushing that and want to look for expansion. As you know, they do our transportation, so they want to get on a more or a more replacement for the vans, which are expensive. So this is going to give them some options, so that when we're ready, or when they're ready to act, there's funding there to be used. If they did not establish this reserve, just so you know, I think you did not see it at the region, but at both the Dover and Sherborne, you saw that there were surplus reserves that they had to give back to the members. So I think it would be in our best interest to have them put this money aside to create new opportunities for us and Accept and continue to build, build that. So they're asking each district, and you'll vote on this by district, to approve the establishment of a capital reserve. And you have the motion that talks about that the requested limit will be $1 million at this point. I know it comes a little bit out of left field for you, but it is, it's similar to tax. So those of you know, the Education Cooperative, Accept is a similar entity.
Okay. Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna make a motion, make a motion and then discussion, if that's okay. And I can read, I can read what the motion is, and I don't know if, I can read it for each time if it makes it easier, or, you know, for each. So how about Dover? To me, the motion is to approve the creation of Accept's capital reserve with a balance limit of $1 million for the purpose of accumulating funds for the acquisition, maintenance, improvement of capital items.
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have such a motion?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
Second?
Liz Grossman, second.
And Nancy, we're gonna move through each of the committees and then take discussion together, is that the plan? Okay, great, thank you. Kate? Do I, should I, do I have to read this every time, or can my first read?
Your first read, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was confused on before. I thought I had to repeat it. So from the region, do we have a motion in accordance with what, with Nancy's motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Judy. Second?
Lynn Collins, second.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, and from Sherborne, do I have a motion?
So moved, Dennis Quandt.
Okay, thank you, Dennis.
Amanda Brown, second.
Okay, great. Okay, and we can start discussion. Lynn, go ahead.
So I, I can easily take this offline if, if everyone else gets what's going on. I, I do not understand any of this at all. Like, I don't understand what the money is for. I don't understand why we're being asked. I, so if, if this is going to be a waste of time, I'll catch you offline.
So it's a, it's a collaborative, and we're a member. So as a school, there's school districts that are members of the collaborative, so it's actually part of us. So we participate, they, they provide special education programs. So if you're a member of Accept, you pay one rate. If you're a non-member, you pay another rate. So it's actually a collaborator that comes together to, except particularly, to provide special education programming and support. So we're a member. We pay, we pay members, we're assessed a member's fee, both at Dover, Sherborne, and the region to participate. And it avails us opportunities that Accept Collaborative, a special education organization, provides. So we're, Natick's a member, you know, it's, well, there's a lot of the Metro West school districts are members. So we actually, as, so Kathy is our superintendent, actually represents all three of our committees on the, on the board. And so we, it's almost like we own, we are a partnership. We own in the Accept. So say Accept went away, any fund balance they have right now would be dispersed back to the member districts. So they're at, so we, so it's sort of like, the board actually oversees the operations. So the board is coming for, Accept wants to set up a capital reserve fund. So think about it as town meeting. They're coming forward to their member districts to ask permission to create a capital reserve fund similar to what our towns do. So they own a building, they own their vehicles. So they are looking to be able to have some capital assets put aside for future capital needs. Does that make a little more, a little more sense?
It does, and you probably explain this each year to me.
Well, I will be honest, the region doesn't care as much about Accept because of the way of our, our special, our out-of-district programming works. So you probably don't care as more, as much about it as the two locals do.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Kate?
Thank you. Lynn, I think that's a great question, and I've been on these committees for a while, and it's still always good to have a refresher. And Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, but just, you know, some examples of students who would be using Accept, are students who are not able to take our other buses for some reason or another, students in out-of-placement district, I mean, district out-of-placement. Some schools who, who, students who attend different programming during the summer. Is that correct, who might also?
So Accept has their own programming that they offer in their own building. They also, if you remember, I don't know, Kate, if you were still on Sherborne, when we rented space at Pine Hill to some of Accept's programs. They tried to be. Oops, sorry, in the school. In the school. I'm getting feedback.
Because we had a cohort there, it made sense, and we had room. Yeah, I do remember that. Yeah, so Lynn, I don't know if that makes more sense? Yeah. Thanks.
And this motion is just to create the reserve account? We're not actually obligated to put any money into it, at least at this point? It's using existing funds in their ecosystem to kind of fund it as a reserve?
Yes, and we, we would never contribute funds from our district. It's, it's their surplus funds or what is, you know, derived from their operations. So we would never directly contribute. It's just, you know, by the revenues for their fees, for their tuitions, the cost of transportation, they may accumulate surpluses over time, and they're, they'll be using those funds. So once they have two-thirds of the districts approving their creation, the board's coming back together and voting to put $1 million into the account of surplus funds that already exist. But they have to create that account, they have to create the fund first in order to be able to do that.
And this benefits our students because they're able to upgrade equipment. They're able to, whatever capital needs they have, as Dawn said, they assess fees where a member district. So it benefits us to have a collaborative where our students could go at a reasonable cost, you know, with other member districts. And at the same time, by allowing them to do this with their funds, it benefits the type of, again, property, the places that our students are able to go. So it benefits our students.
Any more discussion? No, okay. So we can take a vote by committee. I'll start this time with Kate, and I can read the language. Okay. The vote is to approve the creation of Accept's capital reserve with a balance limit of $1 million for the purpose of accumulating funds for acquisition, maintenance, and improvement of capital items.
Thank you, and at this point, it's just the roll call.
Correct.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Sarah, over to you.
All right, Dover members, I think we can proceed right to the vote. So, Mark?
Mark Keely, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez, done, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sherborne will vote about the aforementioned motion, no, yes, motion, sorry. It's getting late. Dennis?
Dennis Quandt, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Nancy Cordell, yes. Okay, at this point, the next item is a German, so do we have unanimous consent? Oh, oh, sorry, Judy?
Yeah, wasn't there a superintendent search update on the agenda, last item?
Oh, you know what, so I, you know, I'm sorry, I, after the first agenda comment, I wrote my notes. So I'm going, I don't have, I'm going after old Jared, I apologize. Oh, thank you, Judy. Yes, so there is, yes, there is, and Sarah?
Sure, so I think I'm very conscious of the late hour, but we just wanted to give an update consisting of just a couple items tonight. The first is the formation of a search team to conduct our superintendent's search this fall. And so I can say that on, for the Dover School Committee, I am very pleased and grateful to announce that Colleen Burt has graciously stepped up to volunteer to serve as our representative. So thank you very much, Colleen. I don't know if Kate and Nancy, you want to share who the representatives from, from your committees will be?
Sure, sure. I am also extremely grateful for their, their passion and their time that they're going to spend. Tracy Mannion and Judy Miller will be representing the Dover and Sherborne side of the region. So thank you very much.
Yes, and from Sherborne, we have, you know, thankful for anyone, and, and we had, we had more than one person want to volunteer, which is great, and David Cass, David Cassis is, is our representative.
And so with those four folks, I, I think that we, we need to hit the ground running, and so thank you in advance for doing so. As, as I see it, the sort of urgent short-term needs for you all would be to, to schedule an initial meeting amongst yourselves and work with Cheryl to post that, since it would be a public meeting. So you, you could meet as early as this Friday, given the 48-hour notice that's required. Might not be a bad idea, if that's, if that's feasible. But the idea, I think, would be that, you know, initially, you've gotta work with NSDEC to firm up the schedule, establish an application deadline, and kind of, you know, build your schedule around that. Another initial task would be the formation of the screening committee. And I know NSDEC can guide you regarding the typical composition and size of those committees. And then, you know, there, there may be parts along the way that would require input also from the three school committees. So we'll need to go ahead and schedule if there are joint meetings that would be required for things like any refinements to the candidate profile, for example. And, and other than that, so I know it's a very heavy lift. We are, I think, all grateful to the representatives who are going to be helping to lead this charge and looking forward to supporting that important work as other committee members. I also just wanted to note that we've received from NSDEC a, an agreement to conduct the follow-up search. So we signed a contract, the three committees signed a contract last year with NSDEC. There was a warranty included in that contract if the search did not result in a full, in a permanent hire, if you will, that they would conduct a follow-up search for the same position and provide their consulting and support, support services at no cost, except for expenses. So these would be expenses, search-related expenses, advertising the position, you know, administrative costs at their office. And those expenses are to be $2,760, billed in four monthly payments of $690. So this was already contemplated in the contract that was signed by the three committee chairs last year. We're simply, you know, taking them up on that option at this point. And so I just wanted to bring everyone in the loop on, on that as well. But I am very grateful to the search team and look forward to hearing more from you about this process going forward.
And Sarah, on behalf of everyone here, we're grateful for you moving the ball forward and rallying and getting it going and keeping this on task and timeline. You've really picked, I mean, you've heavy lifted the last three weeks on this, and it's so appreciated and needed. And, you know, we're, we're where we are right now because of, of the work that you did, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Well, I, I do think that the folks at NSDEC have been extremely helpful to us in the past. They were a wonderful resource, and I got to know Art Bettencourt a little bit last year by being part of the interim search team. And I think you will find him and Carolyn an extremely helpful resource and source of guidance going forward. So it's really just been a matter of keeping in touch with them and finding out where they think we need to be and trying to get us there, so thank you.
Thank you. So I think I'm right to say the next item is adjourned, as I'm. So by unanimous consent, can we vote to adjourn? Yes, yeah. All right, great. Have a nice evening, thank you, everyone.